Call the meeting to order. I want to open by apologizing for the slate delay. Council's public hearing can't actually begin until council's work for the day is done, and I'm afraid we had an awful lot of work today. It was a very busy schedule. We just finished our last committee meeting. So I wish you all good evening. This is a public hearing into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. Staff from the city's planning and development department will first present a summary of each proposed bylaw, and then will open up the floor to anyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered will go first, and after that will open the floor. I stress to all of you that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaws to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications, but I assure you it's not a question-and-answer period. It can't be an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with either council members, with staff, or with those in the audience who might be opposed to a particular view. So I'm going to have to ask you. Please restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw. Be as brief and concise as possible. We're asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone will be able to speak who wants to speak. Speakers are permitted to speak more than once if they have more than five minutes' worth of new information, but please make sure it's new and additional information, and you'll have to get back in line to get another five minutes. Be respectful in your submission and not make any personal comments. I ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker, and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. We can't permit any clapping, booing, cheering of any presentation this evening out of respect to each one of the speakers. As chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, or that becomes abusive, or becomes repetitive of views that that speaker has already made known to council. Please note that if you want to have a written version of your presentation, or any written information presented as part of the record of tonight's meeting, you must hand that piece of paper into the deputy city clerk prior to the adjournment of the item that it relates to. So if it's item number one, before item number one is adjourned, please hand in any written materials that you want to have as part of the permanent record. Council can't receive any information after the item is adjourned, so we have to respect the rules under which govern these kinds of meetings. Immediately following the adjournment of the public hearing tonight, a regular council meeting will convene in order that council can give consideration to items that are on the public hearing agenda. However, if council wishes, or if council requests any further information related to any individual item, consideration of that item can be deferred pending receipt of the requested information. I will now call on Ms. Lor to introduce the bylaw and planning and development staff to make a presentation on item number one.
First item relates to bylaw number 4,042,009, and it's an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3,000, 1996, and its amending bylaws to improve clarity of the zoning bylaw and reduce development application process times.
Your worship, members of council. Item number one, these city-initiated housekeeping amendments to the zoning bylaw would address a number of issues identified by staff and customers over the course of the last several years since the last set of housekeeping amendments were completed by the city in 2006. This package of housekeeping amendments proposes amendments to approximately 12 sections of the zoning bylaw. A summary of these amendments has been provided in Attachment One to the public hearing brief. Generally, these amendments are intended to either clarify a regulation to hopefully better achieve the intended objective of that regulation, remove or correct a regulation which conflicts with other regulations in the zoning bylaw, or with official community plan policy, or remove a regulation that through the passing of time or any other changes to the bylaw are no longer necessary. None of the proposed housekeeping amendments should result in major shifts in policy or procedures, significant changes in how land use is regulated, or changes in the original intent of the adopted regulation. Staff believe these zoning bylaw text amendments will help improve the function and clarity of the day-to-day implementation of the zoning bylaw, which ultimately should improve customer service. Staff therefore recommend council give second, third, and fourth reading to bylaw number 4040, 2009. Thank you.
But before we do that, we will hear from the public. Are there any speakers to this item? Actually, I should comment right off the bat, but this actually is the first public hearing that is being webcast, which means that folks at home will be able to click on an icon as soon as the icons are opened, and be able to watch this public hearing, and they'll be able to watch it by chapter, that is, by item, and review it, and see the speakers. Your face probably won't be visible only because there's a single camera in the room, but the audio will be the important part. So that's starting tonight. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? I declare this item closed.
Item number two relates to bylaw numbers 4,044 and 4,045, 2009, application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3,000, 1996, and its amending bylaws to rezone the property at 277 Schoolhouse Street from N1, General Industrial, M3, Special Industrial, and M6, Retail Industrial, to M6, Retail Industrial, and to increase the amount of permitted uses within the Schoolhouse Street area of the M6 zone.
This application is a combined zoning bylaw text amendment and zoning map amendment for site located at 227 Schoolhouse Street on the southeast corner of Schoolhouse Street and Booth Avenue. The site is designated as industrial under the Southwest Coquitlam Area Plan. Zoning on the site includes M6, Retail Industrial, M3, Special Industrial, and M1, General Industrial. Zoning directly to the south and southeast of the site is also M1, General Industrial. To the west, P1, Civic Institutional, and to the north are RM2 and RM3 Apartment Residential Zones. The site is currently used for a variety of commercial and industrial uses under the existing M1, M3, and M6 zones. The applicant is proposing to rezone the M1, General Industrial, and M3, Special Industrial portions of the subject property to M6, Industrial within the Schoolhouse Street area, and amend the M6, Retail Industrial Zone to increase the permitted uses allowed within the Schoolhouse Street M6 area. The Schoolhouse Street area, as shown on the sketch, was a special M6 zoning area adopted by council in 2003 to encourage, among other things, live-work opportunities. As a result, sites within the M6 zoning classification within this area are subject to a unique list of permitted commercial and industrial uses as outlined in the zoning bylaw. The applicant's property is currently the only M6-zone site within the Schoolhouse Street area. The specialized list of uses created for the Schoolhouse Street M6 area zone has inadvertently limited the employment opportunities within the area. As a result, the applicant is seeking to expand the permitted uses within this area to allow all the industrial and commercial uses currently permitted in the M6 zone outside of the Schoolhouse Street area, in addition to the unique list of uses permitted within the Schoolhouse Street area. The existing, as well as the additional uses that would be permitted under bylaw 4045, are provided in Attachment Two of the public hearing brief. No changes are proposed to the existing buildings on the site at this time; however, any changes in the future would be subject to a development permit application. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers to this item? Item two, are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? So in Schoolhouse, seeing none, I declare this item closed.
Item three relates to bylaw number 4,034, 2009, and it's an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3,000, 1996, and its amending bylaws to rezone the property at 1360 Glenn Brook Street from RS2, One Family Suburban Residential, to RS10, Executive Single Family Residential, and P5, Special Park.
Your worship, as indicated on the overhead, the subject property is located on the west side of Glenn Brook Street, north of David Avenue. The property totals .7 of a hectare, or 1.7 acres, and is presently zoned RS2, One Family Suburban Residential. The site is designated Executive Single Family, an environmentally sensitive area in the Upper High Creek Village Neighborhood Plan. Properties to the north are zoned P5, Special Park, and RS10, Executive Single Family Residential. To the south, RS2, One Family Suburban Residential. To the east, Executive Single Family Residential. And to the west, P5, Special Park, and RS3, One Family Residential. The site currently accommodates a single-family dwelling, and the proposal resoning to RS10, Executive Single Family Residential, and P5, Special Park, is consistent with the neighborhood plan, and will facilitate the development of single-family building lots fronting Glenn Brook Street, and the protection of an environmentally sensitive area.
Are there any speakers to this item? Okay, when you approach the microphone, we'll ask for your name and address for the record, and each speaker has five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tony Proietti, and I live on 1375 Glenn Brook Street, and I'm under presenting paper of the application. Thank you.
Got another 404 minutes and 50 seconds.[715.01][715.01](Laughter). Are there any other speakers to this item? Second time, are there any speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, declare this item closed. Thank you.
Item four, bylaws numbers 4,018 and 4,019, 2009, an application to amend citywide official community plan bylaw number 3479, 2001, and City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3,000, 1996, and their amending bylaws to revise the land use designation and zoning of 3395 Galloway Avenue and 1359 Coast Meridian Road.
Your worship, as indicated on the overhead, the subject properties front Coast Meridian Road to the west and Galloway Avenue to the south. The properties total .94 of a hectare, or 2.3 acres, and are presently zoned RS2, One Family Suburban Residential. The site is designated Street-Oriented Village Home and Small Village Single Family in the Spandling Creek Neighborhood Plan. Properties to the north are zoned RS2, One Family Suburban Residential. To the south, RTM1, Street-Oriented Village Home Residential. To the east, RS8, Large Village Single Family Residential, and RTM1, Street-Oriented Village Home Residential. And to the west, RS2, One Family Suburban Residential, and RTM1, Street-Oriented Village Home Residential. Sites currently accommodate single-family dwellings. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the Spandling Creek Neighborhood Plan from Small Village Single Family to Street-Oriented Village Home and Environmentally Sensitive Area. The proposal rezoning to RTM1, Street-Oriented Village Home, and P5, Special Park, will facilitate the development of a 35-unit street-oriented residential development and the protection of an environmentally sensitive area that bisects the site.
Thank you. I have a speaker's list. I assume the first two are proponents, and I'll just read them off in order. Brian Chigatoni, I have Michael Herbert would be number three, second on the list, and Walter Coop is number three on the list. Come forward, Brian. Oh, that will be activated in a moment.
Copies of the exterior views that were provided...
Name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. Brian Chigatoni with Atelier Pacific Architecture went through Onwater Street in Vancouver. In the original development permit package, there were some perspective views of the buildings, but they had a rendering filter on it, so they were a little bit fuzzy, so we've provided copies of the renderings. This one shows the art filter on it, so it's a little bit more difficult to read. This is actually a view from the internal street, which shows the garages and the individual identified units of the townhomes. This is a view from Coast Meridian, which is two and a half stories high, entries into the individual units directly from the street. This one has the filter turned off, so you can actually see the materials and the detailing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Secora with questions.
Yes, I wanted to ask you a question. How many square feet in each unit?
They vary from approximately 1,400 to 1,600, and there are some that are quite a bit larger than that, about 19-something, so...
And they're three stories?
There are two stories, approximately two stories and a bit on one side, and then three stories on the other, following the grade.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Asminton.
(Inaudible) just a second, please. Okay. Through the afternoon staff, we're seeing an application for an increase in density, and I guess it's an increase of 10 units in this area, but I guess, what's the extenuating circumstance? We've done a neighborhood plan passed about four years ago, so what's the...I can understand density increases if there's reasons, but if it's just for more units, for more volume or profit, what's the circumstance surrounding the need for the increase in density?
Okay, so the question is, there was an increase in density. What was the reason behind it?
Through your worship, to Counselor Asminton, in this instance, the neighborhood plan didn't identify the subject water course. So the land use designation didn't take into account that water course and some of the complexities of developing east-west oriented, single-family homes on that site. So that's a primary factor. Secondly, the proponent proposing an RTM1 site allows for more flexibility in that site design, the layout of those units. The internal roads then can be a strata-type road, which is more compatible with DFO requirements in terms of crossings of the water course. So there's a number of items, and perhaps the proponent had some more information they'd want to share as well.
Actually, I think you pretty much encapsulated the whole thing. The other thing, the advantage of the RTM1 is that it allows you to move the strata roads around to maintain the existing trees. There is quite a large number, large stands of trees on the property that we wanted to preserve, so it allows that flexibility as well.
Okay. I just, it came up in committee, and I'll mention again today, is that for council, as we go forward, when we did, we've gone through extensive public consultation, neighborhood plans, pass those plans, approve densities, that as we get these applications forward, density increases, we need to know, that number of the 10 units is good, but we also need to know what the accumulation of that density is within the area, and what that's going to affect on the other surrounding developments that are going to impact. We don't want a whole mountain just full of townhouse developments, because you're just going to create a slum type of look in 20 years. So that's my concern with this. I'm thankful for the information about the water course, and that wasn't known at the time of the application, or at the time of the OCP neighborhood plan?
Through your worship, Counselor Asminton, yes, that's correct. The neighborhood plan doesn't indicate that subject water course.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so what we're doing is redesignating the types of density so that we can protect the 10-meter, protect the environmentally sensitive area around the water course, along with the other stands of trees, for example, that Mr. Chigatoni mentioned.
That's correct, your worship.
Okay. Counselor Reed.
What will be going on the property immediately to the north, the remainder of A, and also to the south of it, Lot 33?
Through your worship, to Counselor Reed, to the north, the designation is Small Village Single Family. And sorry, I didn't catch the second part of your question.
To the south.
On the south side of...
Through, yeah. Through your worship, to Counselor Reed, it's Street-Oriented Village Home.
So what we're doing then is we're going to increase the street-oriented village homes to 35 on this whole site.
Yes.
Correct?
Through your worship, yes, that's correct. A total of 35.
So is there no way of getting, you know, I too don't want to go into a neighborhood and see nothing but townhouses. I like it that we're splitting it up, so because the site is split, is there no way you can do half on one and half on the other, or a portion on one and a portion on the other?
Through your worship, it would be technically possible to do that. The yield would be affected. It wasn't, like I mentioned before, the water course wasn't anticipated in the neighborhood As the proponents outlined, the proposal to allow for an RTM1 type of unit provides for more flexibility in that, provides for the protection of trees, as noted, and the protection of the water course. So the answer is yes, you could have a mix of the small, the single-family units, as well as the street-oriented townhomes.
Okay, well, I'll tell you where I'm going with this. We're just starting up there, and we keep changing the zoning to, from something down to townhouse, from something down to townhouse, and we're going to end up with a plethora of townhouses and not much else. It's going to be quite boring, and also it's going to affect the density up on the mountain. So I'm having a bit of difficulty going through with this one. I wish we had have come up with a better plan and not had to go up 10 units. Thank you.
Your worship, may I add one more comment?
Go ahead.
I think what should also be pointed out, that if you looked at density based on the site area, that you would actually get 35 units. That would be 28 for RTM1, and RS7 would be 7 units, so a total of 35 units based on allowable density. It's that repairing area that runs diagonally that makes the site less efficient. You just can't fit lots on triangular portions, and that's what reduced the overall density, and which gives you that 25 number, which would be the 21 units from the RTM1, and four with the RS7, totaling 25.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor Reed. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. So I have a question. In the previous item, it talked about a 15-meter setback from the high watermark, and here we have a 10-meter from the natural boundary of the water course. And I'm just trying to understand what the standard is, and how is this one different?
Through your worship, to Counselor Robinson, it has to do with the qualified environmental professionals' interpretation of the repair and area regulation, and as we talked about this afternoon in committee, regards to the factors that influence the setback from high watermark that the qualified environmental professional recommends. In this case, as mentioned before, it wasn't identified in the neighborhood plan, and according to the qualified environmental professional, it's sort of intermittent in terms of having water in it. It is, seeing the site, it's almost at grade, so it's not as significant as the previous item we dealt with, item three on the agenda this evening. So given those factors, they contribute to the qualified environmental professionals' interpretation of what is required under the regulation.
Thank you.
Richardson, could you characterize the water course? What is it? How would you describe it?
It's basically at grade. It varies in width. If I could share some photos, if council members would like.
You can just, what is it, you're saying it's at grade, so it's a shallow ditch, a shallow...
Yeah, closer to ditch, a very shallow water course.
Okay. Thank you. Good. Counselor Reed again.
I need clarification again. So you told me that what's on the south and the north is going to be small village, single family. So the water course doesn't just appear and end on this one piece of property, the subject property, correct? So then it must go south, too?
Correct.
So therefore, what was supposed to be small village, single family down there probably won't be able to be a viable choice either. Is that correct? So now we're getting to a lot more townhouses, not just... I mean, pretty soon we're chasing, we're changing the face of our plan, and we can't keep doing this.
Your worship, if I could, in the large package for the public hearing tonight, the report's Attachment Four, in there, shows the existing neighborhood plan designations, and if you notice on that, and this is outside, well, a portion's on the subject property, because the subject property, as Stephen said, goes out to Coast Meridian at the northwest corner, so that's designated for the small village townhomes. The property to the south is similarly designated, so I guess in the neighborhood plan, the thinking was to have that consistency along that east side of Coast Meridian, and typically on arterials, you would have that sort of higher density or medium-density development. And then the balance of the property in behind had the small village, single family designation, along with that little corner piece there, right immediately south. It's with the determination of the water course that has this corridor, which would be roughly 20 meters wide, bisecting diagonally the subject property and presumably the property to the south. So that's, it's kind of a natural factor on that property, so...
So is Attachment Four going to be the end result?
Your worship, through to Counselor Reed, no, I'm just pointing to that, is that's what the existing neighborhood plan has in terms of the land use designation, so...
Close to was Attachment Five.
Yeah, so...
That's what I'm trying to get.
So basically, building on that, that existing pattern of land uses, designation of land uses, and now given the fact of the intermittent advantage channel there and the setbacks as recommended by the QEP, the applicant is proposing to change the OCP to provide for the street-oriented village homes on the balance of the property.
Okay, so my question then will be, on Attachment Five, if I start going north, this little creek, or whatever the little devil is, is still going to go north, and is that going to change the designation on those properties to the north and east?
Your worship, that would be then up to those property owners, as when they would consider their development opportunity and potential to decide whether they want to develop consistent with the neighborhood plan and the accompanying zoning, or come forward with a different idea. You're talking about some larger parcels of land there that very well may be able to accommodate the development based on the existing neighborhood plan, but it would be up to those individual property owners to come forward with their proposals at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thus ends the questions from council. Is Michael Herbert interested in speaking?
Michael Herbert, 3501 Highland Drive, and a proponent for the project. I may be able to clarify some of the questions that Counselor Reed had. In the original application, in the land use designation, this water course was missed, and it was missed not only at the city level, but by the environmental engineers as well. So in an effort through two and a half years of consultation with fisheries and the planning department, a plan was devised that would help protect the limited water course there, and utilize the townhouse to be able to provide the 10-meter setbacks on each side of this water course. The actual... The actual, if the water course had not been there at the outset, our densities would have ended up being approximately the same, RS-7s and the RTM-1. The parcel to the southwest, parcel 33 there, was originally for RTM-1. However, there is, I believe, an application either in the works or, or on hold as a result of discovering the water course, I guess, and that was for church on the corner. So that changes the, the density quite significantly, of course, and decreases it. To the northeast, the question councillor Reed that you had with respect to where does this, this water course go? In fact, it, it does cross just the corner of parcel A there, and then the parcel two, which is to the east, the water course in fact sort of fizzles out. It becomes a groundwater source, and it has already been dealt with, with the applicant dealing with that five-acre parcel. So that, in fact, has already been, been dealt with on their property. So it really had, it, it's a very minimal course, it's, it's a ditch, and it has very limited flow through there throughout the year, and we've simply worked with DFO for two and a half years to try and find a way of preserving what they felt was an important source downstream. I hope that clarifies some of the questions that, that came up.
You're in effect the headwaters of the ditch.
Um, not, not on, on this particular site, but on the next site, which again, it was a groundwater, uh, issue, and I believe that's been taken care of through Cullford.
Okay. That's it?
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll start with the speakers list. Those were the proponents. Speaker is Walter Coop.
My name is Walter Coop, and I'm at 1386 Sutherland Avenue. I'm a member of the Hyde Creek Community Church, which owns the adjacent property to the west and the south of the property being discussed here. I'm currently chairing the team that's working towards building the church on that piece of property. We absolutely have no objections to any other rezoning. We're in full compliance, and, uh, I think we've worked closely with, with the people that are applying for the rezoning to actually bring this to fruition. My, I do have a question, or have they actually submitted a preliminary plan for, for the property moving forward? And I'd be interested in seeing that. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is this little matter of this, what one of the drawings calls an environmentally sensitive area. While it's important to be a good steward of the land, and we've been in contact with DFO in regards to this in our property, it's a non-fish-bearing, non-permanent drainage, okay? That's under DFO that allows insects and foliage to be carried down, providing nutrients to the fish-bearing areas. This is really quite different than environmentally sensitive. Subsequently, the difference between 15-meter setbacks, 10-meter setbacks, and perhaps even less. A lot of that drainage is actually channelized and marginalized. So there's a lot of variances that are, that are in, in occurrence on here. And I actually do have a question, how was the drainage elevated to environmentally sensitive area? In 2006, when we, prior to actually purchasing the property, we came to the city of Coquitlam. I think a few people have mentioned, none of this waterway, as it's now defined or described, was on any of the drawings. I had some of the original drawings. This has all come out as a result of environmental studies that were done subsequent to the original OCP, et cetera. And we're working closely with DFO to actually work out some of the details as to how we can actually get our church building onto this piece of property. Prior to actually our purchasing the property, we actually met with the city engineering and some of the city planning people to determine what areas, what properties would be appropriate for a church and as a buffer from Coast Meridian to residential areas. And that's how we came up with this particular piece of property. That's all.
Thank you very much. Okay, and that's the end of the speakers list. Are there any other speakers to this item? Second time, are there any other speakers to this item? Come forward.
I think it's a pretty important thing, something here.
Mr. Helm, please, is your name and address for that?
It's Ken Helm at 1303 Forest Walk in Coquitlam. There's a couple of things that we have to look at as we're going through planning process, and there were specific planning initiatives that were being pushed through our neighborhoods as we held our land, and supposedly public process made these pretty pictures and pretty ways to live with lanes and East Vancouver up on the hillside and all the rest of it, which we're struggling with today. What, what we see here, we have to remember here is something too, we passed a bylaw that the RS-7 can have suites. This is a lower density. In townhouses, you're not going to have suites. In all of those single-family homes, there's going to be suites, cars, all that density that comes with that. This proposal here seeks to, you know, deal with the environmental, deal with, um, you know, best land use. There's, there's a neighbor, a church neighbor, a property that would like to, um, be a good community, um, social asset. You got environmental sensitivity that was missed and is now trying to be reconciled with at a headwater. And, um, so I don't think that we should just sit back on our old plan and believe that it's the best thing. I've got land that we can have 300-foot backyards on, you know, and it's a waste of land area. This is efficient, this is effective, so I really think that there's less density here. I think it's a real smart design. I think this sounds like they've gone through a lot of work, and I'm in absolute favor of it, and I actually commend all the people that were involved in getting it this far. It's amazing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helm. Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any others? Please come forward.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor and council, Raymond Ossstein, representing Westbuild Holdings, 1450 Johnson Street, Coquitlam. We have the adjacent property to the east, the five-acre parcel. We've been quite involved with the applicants throughout this very long process, and quite a difficult process too, because of the, you know, the undiscovered water course that is, is there. I'd like to say that it's a smart design, perhaps a brilliant design, that uses this land as it should, that brings in, uh, density, the number of people living there, to virtually the same as what the plan suggests. This follows the intentions of the plan, but comes up with a creative solution that helps all aspects and the difficulties of this site. So we fully support this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? For the last time. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any written submissions? Nothing? Uh, I declare this item closed. And we move now to the main event for many of you.
Item five, bylaw number 4059, 2009, is an application to amend city of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000, 1996, and its amending bylaws to allow the continued operation of the temporary rotating cold-wet weather map program at Coquitlam Alliance Church, located at 2601 Spuraway Avenue, Eagle Ridge Bible Fellowship, located at 1160 Lansdowne Drive, and Calvary Baptist Church, located at 13, 16, pardon me, 36 Regan Avenue, for the 2009 to 2010, and 2010 to 2011 winter seasons.
Your worship, members of council, as the deputy city clerk had mentioned, the, this item is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to allow for the continued operation of the cold-out weather strat, or cold-out weather program that has operated successfully in those three churches for the last two winter seasons. And the bylaw would allow the program to run, operate by the Hope for Freedom Society at those three churches again for the next two winter seasons, ending on April 1st, 2011. Bylaw 4059 amends three specific sections of the zoning bylaw. It adds the definition of emergency shelter, adds emergency shelter as a permitted use within the P2 zone, and limits the use to the parameters of the cold-out weather program in terms of time, location, and scope, and the conditions set out in the housing agreements registered on the title, on the titles of each of the properties. Staff recommend that council give second, third, and fourth reading to the bylaw.
We have a speakers list of one person. Would Lana Aniva come forward, please? Okay, we'll set Lana aside. Are there any other speakers to this item? Mr. Teason, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Rob Teason. I'm managing director of Hope for Freedom Society. I reside at 6651 203rd Street in Langley. I'll be really brief. As, as an operator of the shelter the last couple of years, we have seen some very positive results, and we have been a, a very minor impact in the communities in which we've held this, these shelters. And I just wanted to let you people know that it is our commitment to run this shelter with the same vigor and enthusiasm that we've done in the last couple of years, and it's our hope that we'll also have the same sort of positive results for the homeless that we achieved in the first two years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Hi, my name's Doreen Carter. The address is 2118 Mary Hill Road, Port Coquitlam. I just want to say that in 2007 and 2008, I was client of the cold-wet weather map program, and, um, I was really grateful to have that. It was a nice, warm, safe place, place to lay my head down and sleep, have something to eat. The volunteers were awesome. They treated us with respect. And since that time, like 2008, I have found recovery, and also a place to live. So I'm very much for the zoning, and, um, yeah, that's about all I have to say. Thanks.
Well, it's great to have you back here. Thanks. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Good evening, mayor and council, Dan Schmidt, 408 Madison in Coquitlam. I'll also be brief. I just want to speak very highly in favor of this program. I've been able to be a volunteer over the last couple of years and anticipate that again. Very proud to have Coquitlam be part of the Tri-Cities Initiative with Cold-Wet Weather Program, and would encourage you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers to this item?
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. My name is Nick Stebing, and my address is 1989 Wood Court, Port Moody. I'm here speaking on behalf of Eagle Ridge United Church. We support the program. I have actually volunteered as a supervisor. I am a retired police officer, so I have seen the people in really poor circumstances. And the fact that we have worked with this city in the Tri-Cities to bring warmth to these people is, it makes me proud, and I support this fully, and on behalf of the congregation of Eagle Ridge United Church, I bring their support too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this item?
My name is Chris Dornhecker. I live at 2689 Burnside Place, which is just around the corner from the Eagle Ridge Church in Coquitlam. And I'm glad that we are able to do something, and it seems to be successful. The only thing is, is that we don't want this to be a permanent solution. There has to be a better, that people need more help than just getting a roof over their head during the cold months that have been designated. We need to address what in the long term, many of these people need more help than that, and we need to address that. And that is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will speak on behalf of council that we are, uh, the city is doing a great deal of work to, to put in place a permanent solution that includes shelter beds, includes transitional housing and treatment, and various other services for the people that this program will house temporarily. This is a stopgap measure. Until that can be put in place, we know that that's a couple of years ahead. In any case, we've got a lot of work to do for that option and, and for other interim steps, but council and staff are working hard in that direction. Are there any other speakers to that item? Any other speakers? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item closed. The public hearing is now adjourned. We will be convening a regular meeting of council in a moment.